For those of you who haven't seen the presentation tonight, for those of you who haven't looked at me, my name is Derek Thomas and I will be presenting two small presentations tonight on behalf of a citizen against phosphate mining in Union County and on behalf of Dr. Sidney Boggs, a local hydrogeologist who cannot be here with us tonight. So to tell you who I am for those of you who don't know, I graduated from Union County High School in 2003. I got a bachelor's degree in wildlife conservation from the University of Florida. I got a master's degree in fishery science also from the University of Florida. I was a former wildlife biologist for a legal enterprise in South Florida and the University of Florida. I was a former research assistant at the University of Florida, a former fisheries biologist at the Wyoming Game and Fish Department, former fisheries biologist at the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission. I am associate fisheries professional with the American Fisheries Society. I left Fish and Wildlife Commission in 2015 to pursue my medical doctorate degree at Florida State University. Next slide please. To give you guys an overview of what we're going to be talking about today, we have several reasons for opposing this mining operation in this county. Among these reasons include exposure to toxic substances, negative impacts to people of all income levels and backgrounds in this county, the generation of noise, traffic, pollution, destruction of fish, wildlife, forests, and rivers, and the cessation of the growth of our county. Next slide. I'm going to start by addressing the issue of toxic substances. A lot of talk tonight about gypsum and the fact that gypsum won't be there. Whether or not that is true, gypsum is not the only source of radiation that you find in the ground. Another one comes from a radioactive substance called radon, which is a decayed product of radium. The levels of this are very high in the state, which you will see in the next slide. Radon is the second leading cause of lung cancer in the United States. Union County already has the highest rates of lung cancer in the state of Florida, double that of any other county. This difference is not explained by differences in smoking rates in Union County, which are similar to other counties. Phosphate mining has also been linked to botulism poisoning. What sets our presentation apart is that we are going to provide facts with peer-reviewed scientific papers. Next slide please. This is a paper on phosphate mining activities that found that surface water on phosphate mining land contained bacteria called Clostridium botulinum. It's related to botulism poisoning, this is what causes it. The actual bacteria doesn't infect you, it makes a strong toxin, which when it's ingested can cause paralysis, starting in your eyes and moving down until you can't breathe. Next slide please. This is another paper demonstrating the link between phosphate mining and radon and radium. Elevated levels of phosphate, elevated levels of radon and radium have been documented in mining areas in the soils. Next slide please. This is another study that looked at well contamination, demonstrating contamination with radon and radium in well water surrounding phosphate mining activities. Next slide please. This is a map of Florida. The counties in orange, which you will note include Union County, have elevated levels of phosphates in the soil. Yellow means it is negligible, orange means it is intermediate, four to ten nanograms per gram. A lethal dose is considered ten. Note that this is below the soil, which will be disturbed in mining activities. Note that Union County is one of the counties that has elevated levels as of now. Next slide please. This is a statement from the Florida Department of Health. It says that Florida mining activities for phosphates can significantly increase the concentration in the mining process. Anyone who thinks that radon will not be contaminating the local mining areas is in odds with the Florida Department of Health's official position. Next slide please. For those who haven't seen it, this is lung cancer. The bottom right here, you see some poor individual who was infected with lung cancer. Get away their lung, this is what it looks like on X-ray. It's a very terrible disease. Next slide please. In addition to the radioactive material, particulate matter can also cause problems. For one, it can lead to existing lung problems back then. If you have asthma, COPD, emphysema, chronic rhonitis, and you are exposed to particulate matter, i.e. dust, you can expect that condition to get worse. In addition, it causes irritation to the airways, basically the tubes in your chest and in your throat that move air into your lungs. Fraud of irritation to the airways over a long period of time causes a process called metaplasia, which is a precursor to cancer. Continuing irritation exposes people to an elevated risk for cancer, pulmonary fibrosis or hardening of the lungs, and heart disease. In this top picture, you see normal, healthy lung tissue. In this picture, the thick pink areas are buildup of mucus from someone who was exposed to chronic irritation to airways and developed lung disease. When you develop this lung disease, you can directly suffocate, you can get a condition called metabolic acidosis, you struggle to breathe until your blood turns to sick, or you can go into a heart failure and have a heart attack. This is an example of what somebody with chronic irritation resulting in chronic obstructive pulmonary disease or COPD may look like. Because they struggle to breathe, their chest increases in size and the lack of oxygen can turn them blue. The tissue in their hand is to represent the roughly one liter of mucus that these people cough up a day after exposure to these substances. Next slide please. The next issue that we want to address is the destruction of fish, wildlife, forests, and rivers. A lot has been said tonight about whether this is actually going to occur. We can tell you that it is. In my professional opinion, as a fisheries biologist, as a wildlife biologist, this is a direct threat to the wildlife of our county. Deer, turkey, hogs, game animals, other non-game animals, all live and exist on these properties and the surrounding properties. One thing that you can expect, that hasn't been talked about, is that if the river floods on these phosphate areas, they can become muddy. Muddy water is not good for fish. It drops the oxygen levels, fish populations decline. That is something that you can see. We will provide you with documented studies backing this up as well. And something that I think we can all agree on is that a muddy river is not an enjoyable river. I ask everyone here to think about the times that you've been down to Chesapeake Sea Park in Worthington Springs, enjoying picnic in the river with your family. What would that be like if this water looked like soup? Next slide please. People don't hunt and fish on phosphate mines while the mining is going on. While it's true that mining can create opportunities afterwards, it is only with landlord permission. And anytime that the general public gets involved, it's usually involving agreement with the state. Anyone who's hunted on state property can tell you that if it's open year-round, it's crowded. If it's not, it's very tough to get a permit to own those areas. In addition, because of the fact that the habitat is directly destroyed, the wildlife populations will be impacted, it's not likely to be fruitful for many years after the mining operations are complete. Next slide please. How will wildlife be impacted? That's a question everybody asks. Well, wildlife generally need three things to survive: a habitat, a food, and a water. Active phosphate mines provide only water, and as we've seen, because of the botulism poisoning, the value of this is questionable. While phosphate need the ability to move between areas of usable habitat, mines will disrupt the ability to move between these areas where they are capable of habitating. Separation of the animals into small, isolated pockets leads to local extinction. In biology, this is called the island effect. It was first documented in small islands in the Pacific in 1962. Why do they die? Through generations of inbreeding? Through constant pressure? Through constant struggle to survive and find the resources, the food, the water, and the living space that they need? Next slide please. Some of the endangered species that we've mentioned earlier, woodthorns, red cock-headed woodpeckers, gopher tortoise, indigo snake, oval pitto, which is a plant species in the river. We've heard some claims tonight that animals can live on phosphate plants, and they have been seen on the phosphate plants. And I'm sure they have been seen on the phosphate plants because they have no other choice. In biology, animals tend to occupy the best available habitat, and when their populations exceed the capability of that habitat to maintain them, they have no choice but to spill out into other areas. That's the same concept here in phosphate mining. It's the same concept we saw with black bears. Black bears in the Alaskan National Forest had no choice but to move into neighborhoods because their population exceeded what the forest could provide. That is the same thing we will see if the wildlife species own these phosphate mines. Next slide please. As for the prospect of reclamation, we do not believe that the reclamation is even possible. I ask everybody to do an experiment. You can do this with your children when you get home tonight. In your backyard, take a shovel, dig a small hole, remove a cup of dirt. That will represent the phosphate that's being mined from these lands. Try to fill that hole back in right away, using only the dirt that you took out of the hole. What you will notice, the hole does not fill up. This is the same concept as the reclamation that they were proposing. Remember that reclamation does not remove the initial impacts of mining, and it is not the same as either restoration, and it is not the same as never mining in the land. Next slide. We also believe community growth will cease. White Springs is a town very close to us, it's two counties away. Now, a lot of it is made by the growth of Bartow and the Polk County area, even though they have mines. The way to keep them mined is that they're in central and south Florida, and that they're the largest county mine area in the state of Florida, located close to amenities such as Orlando, Tampa, and other areas. We do not have that situation in Union County. The best comparison for us, in terms of our populations and how the mines will impact us, will be through White Springs. Since 1980, they have actually lost four residents. Growth in the county will cease if mining is allowed. Next slide please. This is an example of the White Springs mining area. Now, I know it's told there won't be phosphate mines, but there will be phosphate pits because of the nature of the water, which requires that they take holes in the ground. They may not be putting similar ponds in, which we haven't really seen their actual business plans, so we can't really assess that. But what we can say is that these mines will fill up the water. They will have surface water standing because anyone who has ever dug a hole in the ground can tell you it will fill with water. Next slide please. Hold on before we go. On the previous slide, the one other thing I would like to note, you don't see houses in the areas adjacent to the mines. You have to go down to the town of White Springs to find those houses. Next slide please. As for the prospects of jobs, we have always said that we believe the number of jobs created will be minimal. Phosphate mining only requires equipment operators, truck drivers, on-site personnel, and few forms. The largest mining company in the world in 22 nations across our planet employs 9,000 people. Is it worth the destruction of our county, the destruction of our resources, and the destruction of our citizens for, as we've heard tonight, 150 jobs, I think it was? Next slide please. Mining, we need to make absolutely clear, impacts people of all backgrounds, regardless of their race, their income level, their beliefs. It does not matter, everyone is impacted. Lower-income families will be devastated if they become ill from exposure to some of these toxic substances we've talked about. And anybody who's on a budget can tell you that if you have to pay doctor bills on a budget, they can ruin you financially. Homeowners will suffer because the value of their properties will decline. If the water table is impacted, wells may also begin to dry up around this county. And we are going to discuss that much more following the presentation. Next slide please. Why do the property values drop? It's because of the noise, it's because of the pollution of the particulate matter and the radon in the ground. It's because of the traffic, which, even if we're talking about trains, still constitutes traffic. According to one of the facts that I saw on the website, we were looking at 20 hours per day in the working conditions out there. If anyone would like to see what it's like, go to Hamilton County, County Road 136, in the middle of the night, unless the operations take place. Somebody if you think you'll be able to stay in the woods, stay in an area without that noise. Next slide please. This is a map of proposed mining area from the company website. Blue represents Union County, green represents Bradford County. Note the river, and the center. This is the town of Lake Butler, this is the town of Worthington Springs. All these little dots that you see here are neighborhoods. These are people who live immediately next to the mine. This circle up here represents one mile. Every one of these moles are inside of two miles, every one of these neighborhoods. South Union County and West Union County are the most populated parts of our county. They will be the most impacted because they are the parts being mined. Next slide please. Who will be responsible for the damages paid here? That's been a question that's been brought up today by several people, and I'm really glad it is, because that's a question that needs to be answered. Is it going to be the company executives? Is it going to be the phosphate industry? Is it going to be the taxpayers? Who is going to pay for the lost property matters? For people who have, like my parents, invested their entire lives in their home in Union County, stand to lose everything they have? Who will purchase? Who will purchase a county health insurance plan to ensure those that become sick that did not own the mines and can't otherwise afford their health insurance? Should they get punished because they get sick from something they don't own? Who will pay? The lost county revenue is due to reduced property taxes. If these mining companies and the mining industries aren't going to pay this, who will? The answer is the taxpayers. They will bear the direct burden of the responsibility for these mines. Next slide please. As of today, for those who wonder what our support structure looks like, on our Facebook page, 845 likes, 13,000 people engaged, over 2,600 have signed the petition, we clearly have community support. This number is in three weeks as a group. We are building community support by the day. Every day more people come to us, every day more people are raised about these activities. We have the people behind us with this prospect. Next slide. I'm going to conclude this talk and allow everybody to hear a quote from Theodore Roosevelt, who was one of the founding presidents for conservation of natural resources in this country. He says, "To waste, to destroy our natural resources, to skin and exhaust the land instead of using it to increase its usefulness, will result in undermining the days of our children, the very prosperity which we ought by right to hand down to them amplified and developed." That is something that resonates with this county today, 100 years after his presidency. We're going to change now to another presentation which I've been asking you to give on Dr. Sidney Boggs's path. She's a hydrogeologist for many, many years in the state of Florida. She could not be here with us tonight because she is recovering from injury, and she asked me to give this presentation. I discussed all of its content with her in detail, and she's very comfortable with me delivering all the information to you today. The first slide that we see here is a map that was handed out at the county commission meeting in February. All of the gray areas are eligible to be mined in Union County. Note that the cities of Lake Butler, Worthington, Providence, Bradford, and the prison. Our previously only areas that are not eligible to be mined in this county as the land development regulation is currently state. Next slide please. This is a map from the company website that we talked about earlier. This is the same map I showed you before, proposed mining area. Showing approximately 10,700 acres of phosphate mining adjacent to and in the county. Note again, that a large portion of this mine is adjacent to the same day river. Next slide please. This map is a little complicated, so I'm going to walk you through it slowly. This again is a map from the company website. You see the mining area in blue and green. The yellow area here is a neighborhood called the Groves, and it's really hard to see on this map. The pink area is Burn Pond, one of the areas reportedly impacted by this project. The black and the red lines that you see here represent fracture lines in the underlying geology of Union County. The black lines were surveyed by the U.S. Geological Survey. The red lines, which are more extensive, were surveyed by the Florida Department of Transportation. Next slide please. What I want to explain now is what a fracture is. A fracture is a break in the rock formation that runs in linear patterns that creates the aquifer of Florida. For those who are familiar with the aquifer, the aquifer is a system of rocks which hold the water which we are supplied with through rain, storms, and runoff from the land adjacent to the area. The rocks hold the water in, act as an filtration system, and eventually they collect into a pool underneath the ground. This map, or this figure that we're looking at here, shows how these fracture lines can interact with both the surface, which we walk on every day, and the aquifer. Some things that we need to note here are that fracture lines where they intersect, or two lines cross, those are the areas where wetlands, lakes, rivers, ponds, that's how they form. Little holes, little lines, come together to create depressions, wetlands and lakes fill in. The other thing that you need to note is that, as per this research study conducted in 1982 by Brooks and Son, the fracture lines also represent areas where sinkholes can form if the existing ground is disturbed. One of the areas that are most prone to develop numerous and very large sinkholes are the same places lakes are, for example, where the lines intersect. Our lovely Lake Butler Lake, right outside our window here, was created at the intersection of two of these fault lines by a sinkhole that opened up. Next slide please. So this is a diagram that shows you what we're talking about when we mean fractures. This is a lake, this over here is a town, this is a phosphate mine. This is a forest, a cypress pond, and a marsh. These are wells dug from city or local residences. What you see here, this is the aquifer, the underground reservoir for the water which we drain, the water that we use, all of our water and resources. These lines here that are running left to right represent the fractures. What you really need to take away from this is that water does not just flow up and down. Water flows side to side through these lines in the aquifer system. This is called horizontal flow. This is how we can demonstrate that any changes in water in the county have the potential to impact multiple areas. Another thing that we need to take away from this is that lakes, rivers, and wells are all connected through the groundwater system by these patterns of fractures. Next slide please. Again, this slide is kind of hard to see. This is a landsat image. The mining area is here. The blue is Union County, green is Bradford County, this yellow is the Groves neighborhood. I apologize for the color being difficult to see, but you can see that two fracture lines intersect in the heart of the mining in Bradford and Union County. Lake Butler Lake, the Groves, Worthington Springs. That means that any potential mining activities in these areas could create disturbances in these fracture lines, which have the potential to both drain the land and open up sinkholes anywhere along these fracture lines, especially at the intersections we just talked about. Next slide please. This is another look at the fractures. This is a standard map, the blue areas are wetlands. Lake Butler is here, Worthington is here. The mining area is, it's hard to see, it's this area right here, and the river runs right here. Notice again, that anywhere along these fracture lines, any line that passes through the mining area, which is, again, right here, you can see there are numerous lines passing through there, any one of those lines, anything connecting or touching one of those lines has the potential to have its groundwater drain and sinkholes open up in that area. Next slide please. Just to change gears a little bit. In 1999, the United States Environmental Protection Agency created a science and biology group that ranked the various ways which you can disturb a natural community, basically ways that you can destroy the environment in a local area. They came up with 33 criteria. The number one way to destroy natural habitat involves stressing the hydrologic area. That is exactly what phosphate mining will do. In addition to that, numbers three, five, seven, nine, 11, and 14 on this list were also included. Still less than 30% of the risk factors, including the number one most important risk factor, are involved in these mining activities. Next slide please. So this is a diagram that shows you how water is lost in mining. We've heard a lot about the water getting pumped out today, and we're going to address that a little bit later. What we're going to talk about now is how we lose water even when we're not pumping it. It's called non-mechanical deepwater, that's exactly what it sounds like. It's when we're not using machines, but we lose water anyway. So if you look at the top here, this is an area that hasn't been disturbed. This is the water in the aquifer. The brown is the ground that we're walking on today, and you see that it's intact. The trees, the rainfall, those are all just as exactly as you would expect. Now we look at the bottom, you take a big hole in the ground. The first thing you notice is that water pools up there, well, that kind of extends because where we dug the hole right here, there was a bunch of water. The next thing that happens is because that water is exposed and it's not protected by the surface of the ground, that water begins to evaporate. Anyone who wants to see what this looks like? Take a glass of water, set it outside, and three days later, you see if there's the same amount of water in that jar? The answer is no, because it's lost to the air. That's called evaporation. That's the same thing that happens when we open the groundwater up to the air. It evaporates faster and you lose it. But we don't just lose the water in that hole. As I told you before, the water moves horizontally left to right. All the water that was supplying these trees that we grow here in this county for growing, I might add, will flow into this hole and evaporate. You know this in this diagram here? The roots of the trees are no longer in touch with the water. That's why these trees are dying. Now, does that mean that we'll have a bunch of areas of dead pasture? Probably not. There are some things that can survive on there if you're on land. But these are things like Chinese tell, invasive tree species that anyone who knows anything about range management or wildlife management will tell you are basically worthless. Next slide please. So this is a couple of studies that we're looking at that validate the things that we've been talking about. This is a study by the USGS that talked about evaporation loss from the surface waters. One important quote from there, "If net precipitation and rainfall to the lakes is negative and we lose rainwater over a long period of time, then the ability to generate net groundwater from a surrounding basin plays an important role in maintaining levels." That's a really complicated way of saying that from that last slide we showed you, we're going to lose our lakes. The way that we keep our lakes in periods of drought is the groundwater flows horizontally into the lakes. If that groundwater is disturbed, the levels are lowered, we no longer have the ability to survive droughts. I know a lot of the commissioners here were in Union County in 1998 and the lake almost dried up. That's something at that time that we're in the room from happening because we don't have any current taxing of our mail. But this is the concept that we're trying to address right here. Natural water levels are established with natural lakes. Anytime you excavate in the adjacent areas of the lakes, you will alter that area. This is the concept, the reason that most of it is not able to restore the areas immediately like they were. Next slide please. Another brief experiment for everyone, if you want to see what the evaporation is like, take two jars, put a lid on one, the lid represents the undisturbed ground. Leave the other one free. Couple of days later, what you'll see, the jar with the rear is a lot lower water and a higher water level than the jar without the lid. Anything that was flying around in the air, any kind of debris, any of this dust that we're talking about, can't get into the groundwater supply because it's protected by the cap. It can't get into the exposed phosphate mining pits. Next slide please. Now, this is another demonstration of how the actual mining activities can impact the groundwater. On the left here is before mining, all this white area that are the rock, this is the phosphate mine that they're proposing to take out. Now, through a force called catalytic action, the rocks maintain the height of the water table. When those rocks are removed, the water table drops. You see before the water table was high, after the water table was low. Anyone who's ever read The Socks Pebbles with their kids at night, they remember the story of the crow and the pigeon. The crow couldn't get to the water, so he dropped pebbles into the pigeon to raise the water level until he could drink it. Same concept we're talking about right here. Next slide please. This is back to the fractures we were talking about earlier. This is zoomed out, so Lake Butler This is zoomed out, so Lake Butler is here, the Gulf of Mexico is here, Ocala National Forest, Gainesville, Swan River. Note that our fracture lines extend for miles. Our impacts in this county will impact other people farther away from this county. This could cause our county to be open to litigation because of the sinkholes, because of the water losses, because of damages to other people's property. That is not something we want for our county. We do not want to be the county that ruined everything. Note again the presence of the sinkholes, which are in this blue area, along fracture lines. This is in Ocala. Here are some of the Vulcan sandmine activities, there was a clustering of sinkholes. Sinkholes tend to form along these fracture lines, that is again illustrated in this picture. Next slide, please. This is a picture over here of Keystone, Lake Brooklyn. Now, a lot of you people that have been in the area for a long time may remember, there was a time that you could drive along State Route 100, and the docks in this county were overlooking one of those water stretches in the world. Sand mining occurred. The same water table impacts that I've demonstrated to you here today happened. They did not pump water for sandmines, they dug pits. When that happened, the aquifer was breached, as we discussed. Horizontal flow patterns that we discussed were altered. These lakes dropped. That's been many years ago since that's happened. Anybody who drives out there now will tell you, nothing has changed. There are no solutions to these changes, there are no reclamation to these changes. This impact cannot be undone by any means that has been invented in this time. Next slide, please. So as we were discussing before, even if groundwater mechanical pumping is not occurring, please keep in mind that there are damages that will occur. However, if it does occur, on a mine of 10,000 acres in Polk County, 15 million gallons per day are pumped out. That's half the daily water supply for the Tallahassee. That's also about 10 times the size of the mine that we're posing here. So, we can estimate maybe 1.5 million gallons a day. They're saying half the water, 750,000 gallons per day. They were kind enough to give us an estimate that I believe was 11,000 gallons per minute. We did the math on it, that's 66,000 gallons per hour per mining area. 1,584 gallons per day multiplied, excuse me, 1,584,000 gallons per day per site. And two sites total of 3,168,000 gallons per day based on the claims that we already have. Excuse me, 11, I know that every day. No, the calculation still says so. I just spoke myself, 11,000, so let me just state that. 1,100 gallons per day, 66,000 gallons per hour, 1.5 million gallons per day per unit, 3.1 million gallons per day total. Do me one please. So, one of the things that we wanted to point out is that there's been a lot of talk about new research in phosphate. And we keep hearing about this FIPR, this agency which is doing it. So the question becomes, what is FIPR? FIPR is the Florida Institute of Phosphate Research. It is funded by phosphate mining dollars. The reclamation and taxes taken on phosphate mining. One of the first rules in evaluating research as a person that makes decisions based on current research, one of the things we look at is the source of that research. In medicine, if there is a new drug that's being touted to save lives, one of the first things we look at in research of government medicine is we find it. We tend to believe research conducted by universities, by government agencies, and by nonprofit organizations more than we do programs. That same principle holds here. It seems a little bit suspect to take the word of an institution funded by phosphate research dollars that this may be something that we need to bank on. If these options are possible, they will be taking place on other islands in the state. They will be taking place in some other areas. We've talked about the prospect of no air pollution. One of the things that hasn't been brought up tonight is how the phosphate changes the vegetation around the mines. One of the major problems around phosphate mines, then the establishment of invasive grass called togo grass. A lot of people around here call it dink grass. Anybody that's seen it, it's really thick, not particularly good for cows, not particularly good for a lot of them. So what do the phosphate companies do? They spray it. Herbicide spraying is the really only way we have to control mining vegetation other than gardening, which doesn't work particularly well with togo grass. What they spray it with, well, the usual preparation is glyphosate. It's been a, it's been a mainstay of herbicide community for years, up until recently when some research has indicated that it may be a carcinogen. One of the things that we note is that the glyphosate is detected in the air, in the water, and in mining material during the time of mining operations, as discussed by Mosaic's water use permits. Next slide, please. Other claims have been substantiated around phosphate mining. A regional news article in Quaker City found higher rates of unexplained cancer in vets, specifically dogs. The Institute of Phosphate Research by Klein Elder promotes the use of glyphosate on its lands to control togo grass, we just discussed some of the drawbacks of that. Mosaic experts apply glyphosate for helicopters to control this, and we just discussed some of the problems of glyphosate. Moving to the next slide, please. This is, next slide, please. Now, we're talking about that particulate matter. What particulate matter is more tiny dust particles that can become mobilized by strong winds. It's kind of hard to see up here, but this stuff up here is not smoke. This is dust blowing off of some of the mines in central Florida. This is an intersection in Fort Walston, although the road that I've traveled many times going down the Monaca Ranch to work in the summers. This is not fog, this is not smoke, this is dust. This is a field, three miles away, for more than ninety years. This is not snow, this is not sand, this is dust. This is a fence post that used to be a normal chest-high fence post that we're adding now. This is the dust that we can expect from phosphate mining activities. Next slide, please. What it boils down to is the consistency of the environmental components of the comprehensive plan that we have in place is supposedly based on scientific knowledge. What we've demonstrated here to you then is that the fracturing system of our home, those little cracks that move left and right and allow water to leak. And the scientific publications that we presented to the county commissioner just a few minutes ago will show that phosphate mining is not consistent with the intention of the land development regulations which have been in place since the 1980s. Next slide, please. These are some articles from the land development use regulations which we will be citing. There will be more of them that we have supplied for the public record. Copies of all of our information used to substantiate this claim. All of the county commissioners have been provided with electronic copy. We have provided a copy for the county attorney and a clerk of court for the record. Next slide, please. Any mining in the county will be inconsistent with these, and therefore we feel a moratorium on all mining in the county should be immediately implemented.
If you want to speak for your acquaintance?
I have a question. Can't stand it again. When I moved to this area, I stopped a stop in High Springs and stopped at the dive shop. And seeing the pictures of the underground caverns that run from High Springs northeast towards our area, I don't know if they run all the way toward the springs or not, but there's 18 miles of underground caverns that came divers from around the world to explore. And not all of it's been explored. And my concern is in Gilford County in southern Florida, there was a sinkhole that a phosphate mine completely caved into. Are we running the risk of having that happen here? That's part of our Florida aquifer, we could contaminate the water we drink for the entire state.
Thank you for the question. Sure, it's a very good question. Any mining in those areas is connected through the fracture lines to other areas. De-watering along anywhere on that mine, in any of those angles that we look at, de-watering can cause sinkholes to come in. Thank you for your question.
Basically, just as a matter of the agenda, what we're doing right now is we're going to take questions to citizens of phosphate mining. If you want to speak subsequently, they'll have a part, and that's going to be later on in the meeting. So right now, if you want to ask questions to citizens of phosphate mining, we just asked them at a line at the podium behind Mr. Howard, and then ask your questions directly to citizens of phosphate mining.
Thank you for the opportunity to ask a question. My first question, I actually have a few, is while radon and radium will be present, no one is denying that fact, are you aware of the levels that they will be present? Will they be present in negligible levels or in levels that we should be afraid of?
As per current mapping of radon levels in the state of Florida measured in the surface of the ground, Union County is already at moderate levels. Again, four to 10 nanograms per year.
Okay, is that something that like if you walk past it, is going to give you radioactive poisoning? That's basically my question. We're saying this, we all know this, but is it something that's actually going to poison us?
That depends on the concentration and the amount of time you're exposed to it. But again, please keep in mind that when you mine the phosphate, the concentration increases from the four to 10 we have now to a level we can't say there is no studies of it. There goes a dress by the company tonight, not aware of any studies specifically in county. To answer your question, yes, every time you are exposed to radon, you receive a small dose of radiation. That dose of radiation accumulates over here, causing damage to your cells, which can cause mutations or immune responses.
Are you aware of this study that I posted onto you guys' Facebook page from the International Atomic Energy Association or Agency that actually did a study of the radiation levels from radon and radium on phosphate mining? That was, it's posted in the visitor's post section, but it has since been removed. I link to that, citing, citing the information. Were you aware of that?
I had a study in detail, but I can tell you that the study was not done in Union County, which has the higher levels of radon. That is what we're concerned about, is the existing levels of radon we have now that we may be exposed to in the future. But I will definitely read your study and add it to my list later on.
Very good. That, that study finds that they're across the world, and it's done in Florida as well, that, that these radiation levels are to the point that they are almost negligible unless someone is stationed directly near these massive mountains. Okay, okay, next, next question. Clostridium, Clostridium was mentioned as something that, that we ought to worry about in holy ponds or in any pond on these mining operations. Is that something that is found in other waters? Or is it something specific to this?
Clostridium and Clostridium has three strains, A, B, and C, none of which normally infect humans. What does happen, as we discussed, is they produce a toxin called labotoxin. Labotoxin bites into the nerves in your body, shuts them down slowly, starts usually in your eyes, through your neck and your head, and drools down. People almost always die from respiratory risks, they all breathe. Clostridium and Clostridium is found all over the world and many natural sources. What our study indicates are increased concentrations of Clostridium in waters of life. Again, we are not concerned with infecting humans. We are concerned with any animals or people that are exposed to the water may get exposed to the toxin.
Now, isn't this, this Clostridium, Clostridium already found in stagnant waters that are right around just such as ponds, sites as ponds, and swamps?
Absolutely, it is found in those areas, and concentration is increased in mining areas.
And will the state and federal agencies tasked with approving the mining permits take into consideration the USGS information on the practice that you have just mentioned? Will that go into the consideration process as this moves forward and they, they look at all of this information?
Absolutely, as a former state employer, continue the regulation of phosphate works. The company pays the environmental agencies to do research ordering, which is submitted on their behalf to the EPA, the DEP, Army Corps of Engineers, or management districts. The state does not require to validate beyond a reasonable assumption that those might be true. The state does not do the research, the company pays a consultant firm, if you've heard of it, to do their research. While we are not questioning their methods, we are questioning their willingness.
I have another question. Oh, well, I do have one more question. Did, I have spoken right now and asked these questions of my own accord, and I was a representative for anyone else in this room except myself. These are questions that I drive, as I was, very good.
Mr. Howard, can you answer your question?
Program here that somebody else was not able to be here for, a huge comparison of the mine, of the sandmine in Keystone. You made a comment that that's why the plates are dry. Did you check to see how many residential houses had increased from 1974 when they replaced the place with the high foot and now? Or, or did you just go by the point the study was against the two sandmines?
What we did find is there are new houses that are being built in that lake that used to be in the water. Absolutely.
But you have more houses in the Keystone area, so you have more pumps, you have more extraction of the water. So it's not totally against the sandmine, which is the same situation.
Again, we don't feel that the pumping operation is a problem. We feel there's destruction of the actual structure of the old line of rock that we're on.
Would you say your name in the regular ceremony?
I'm R. Elton Jr., my name is Ricky. Also have 18 years of reclamation work for the United Farm House. And if y'all want to see what reclamation looks like, go out to State Road 16 from the start and see Stonehead, Kingsley Lake. Look on your left, as you can see where it's been reclaimed. And I assure you, I had to deal with the EPA directly and every indigenous tree that there had been reclaimed in fact to satisfy them before it signed off on and be mined.
Can you say a little bit about your question?
Yes, my name is Daniel Olson, resident of Union County, and Blake Butler, and I enjoyed your presentation. And I thank you for the opportunity to ask some follow-up questions after this. First question that I do have is, you, you presented all the fracture lines that were in this particular area in Orange, Florida and such, and the example that you used is if this mining operation were to begin operating, that it has an effect laterally, within these fracture lines. All right, and then if you, if you couple that with the accusations that you made as a result of these mines, you paint a picture of the moderate levels of currently existing radon, which will now be elevated, okay? My first question, based on what I've just described to you from your presentation, how has this affected the Light Springs area, the Light Springs community, and those surrounding counties? How many suits have been piled down for folks that got sick from radon or cancer, exposure to radiation, and that sort of monitoring?
Ain't nobody there.
Ain't nobody left.
We don't have information on that, but what we did have was the study conducted in mining areas that showed the radon and radium pollution levels above existing levels. That was due to the same process of disruption of forest material.
Then, and, okay, second point, I really appreciate all the photographs that you showed about hunters and that sort of thing. Because scare tactics usually tend to elevate folks's fear, so, you know, that's great. Y'all, y'all, y'all say- Um, y'all also, y'all, y'all, y'all also?
I have a question.
Neither are you, or is it your, my wife's here? So my point is, and you also presented about the mining, okay? I mean, watch it, it's only as prevalent in all other places, all right? So what I'm saying is, and here's my question, I think you need to pick which avenue you want to go down, because one, you say the mining is going to push all the animals out of the body, and now you're saying that with the mining there, it's going to present an elevated population of watch line in the animals.
So I can't, why can't we have both? If evidence supports both, multiple impacts of mining are possible. We have papers, peer-reviewed papers backing the legislation. Howard, I will address the issue of scare tactics, because I thought that was a good point. We have been used to scare tactics by many people. How many of you here today have quit smoking successfully because you knew that smoking would cause cancer? Like a number of people here today, those were scare tactics, as per the definition that's being announced here. We are not trying to scare you, we are trying to inform you of the negative impacts of mining, mental health risks for lung cancer, heart disease processes, and the play which I'd be acting in detail for you here tonight, as well as other things I've got to say.
All right. All right, point, folks, quit smoking, teenagers begin to smoke every day, okay? And that's the whole reason we got a spot, okay? Just want to follow up on that point, all right? So your point well taken, sir, all right? Last point, if this is so bad, then why are they continuing to mine in Vol County? And why in Lake County, which is the second smallest geographic county in the state that I grew up in, okay? I've been here for ten years. And Lake County is also the second in terms of population, least amount of population in Florida. They've had sand mines in that county for years, for years. In the mid-nineties, they celebrated dredging a mile deep of sand that they've withdrawn from that Florida rock, okay? There's been no detrimental impacts to the environment. They've been able to reclaim the areas that they impacted. And there are already those particulates in the air.
I ask you all, sir?
Forty-six, if that has anything to do with it?
It does, because in forty-six years ago, Lake County did not represent its natural state. Lake County was part of the other things. By the time you were born, you saw these detrimental mining activities there, there was none of that, um, the water didn't really drink. The system of canals was now draining Shaw Harbor, and the increased levels of, among those others, phosphate, have led me to red tide outbreaks, which of course, multiple hazards also endanger the software.
Now, after, after that, now, they did that down, they were strapping down all those naturally occurring, occurring port, that whole filtration system, and they, they army port did that so that they could drain south, south, from south Florida, around the Four Lenders South, so the coast could never ever came in, okay? So, 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 so.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas, for your presentation. Now we go on to, uh, six hours.
Thank you.
Can you hear me? My name is Pamela Schitt. I am president of our Santa Fe River and have been for the last seven months, uh, because I've been tired last year when my granddaddy was born, out of Marshall Real Estate, and have decided to put, give back the community in this sense. Our Santa Fe River was formed in two thousand and seven by a group of concerned citizens who wanted to work on behalf of our strength river officer. We give the river a voice. Our program is one that includes education about issues relating to this river officer, advocacy on behalf of the river getting a voice, and also stewardship, because it needs lots of stewardship as well, cleaning it and protecting it. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, because we have a lot of information already about the water, but I just want to say that we live in an incredible part of the world with the water and water here. Water is the next major crisis the world is going to experience, clean water. You're hearing the guy all over the country and all over the world. Our planet is drying up. Our Florida water is becoming more and more popular. Cave divers do come from all over the world. Eighty-eight, as per Wayne Martin, Tracilego's dive shop, eighty-eight countries that he's had cave divers come. We drink that water. That's the most important thing that you can do. You guys, you can be without food for two weeks, and you cannot be without water for four days. We advocate on so many different issues for the river and the extended offer. We have a problem with the river. The springs, I don't know if some of you are, that are older, remember when you could hear the springs, they used to gurgle, you could hear them a lot away. They are now silent springs. The springs are only flowing at forty percent of what they flow. They are directly related to the flow of the river, which is directly related to the amount of water in the offshore. Why is this happening? Two very simple reasons, water quality and water quantity. Both of which are threatened tremendously in our area and that we need to be aware of. We have challenges from fracking, we have challenges from pipelines, we have challenges about concentrated animal feed operations. Anything over the offshore is going to affect the water in the offshore. Mother Nature took a billion years to create something perfect. Why risk it more than it's already been risked? We're already fighting so many issues on this river, and on our springs, and in our drinking water. Um, as I said, we advocate in a lot of different areas, a lot of different communities, one thing we keep running up against, that regarding the permitting process is a little nebulous, and permits are only as good as the people that sit at the desk and read the reports, and as Eric said, a lot of those reports are not substantiated. Number one, that's nebulous area. And number two, what we find is, when you talk about regulations, standards, the problem is the DEP and water district, uh, water management districts have trouble enforcing every regulation and enforcing the standards, because they don't have the personnel to do that. So it makes you very uncomfortable to say, well, if you need the regulations, if you need the standards, we've found in all these cases that it, you know, it's very hard to, to trust that all of that would happen. The latest thing in South Florida was Turkey, Turkey Point. That's the Florida Department of Environmental Protections is being held to, to move the law now, because they've got six hundred thousand gallons of saltwater now poisoning the, this river, because they were not, they were not enforcing the regulations to monitor. This happens all over. So I just want to say that we are in total favor of the moratorium. Why risk more damage to the rivers and the springs that we are already almost in crisis, and we are seeing them dry up and in danger of our children, children, never seeing what we see now? And also, one last comment is that we know there are people from all over the world, including our own big guys, Bill Gates, and want more and love it, buying thousands and thousands of land in the offshore area. Why? Because they want that water. And our water is the most precious thing that you can protect in each generation. And I'm going to turn it over to our policy director. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. Mary Ellen Gibson with our Santa Fe River, as you know, happy to be here again tonight in front of you. Um, there's, there's several questions, um, that are still left numbering, and frankly, I think you all have covered a huge amount of material. I do want to just share with you one thing I find, that the Santa Fe River does have a minimum flood level. When I hear, um, HPS discuss water permits, it really raises a little, um, concern for me, because I'm not still clear on how large that pivot will be, will it be eight inches, ten inches, twelve inches, twenty-four inches? How big will it be? So I'm not really clear about the offshore comment of a thousand or eleven hundred gallons, which, whatever that was, it wasn't really clear, and I think these men should know better of what that water use will be. Uh, we don't know how the water management district, frankly, deal with them for often, how they will be able to issue this permit on use, so we're so close to the Santa Fe River and on top of the New River, given our natural. We also have a total maximum daily load, it's a TMDL, that's about nutrient loading. Again, phosphate mining definitely will, will contribute to nutrient loading into our river. Your upper Santa Fe River is different than the lower Santa Fe River in that it is runoff conditions that, that drive our river. So anything that happens on the soil here, with the types of, um, streaming that occurs here will eventually go down into the river, um, and we're very concerned about anything uh, that's radioactive or, uh, that could potentially cause something in the river. Um, we also have, um, best management, our best, uh, basin management action plan. So we also have a Dena on our, um, I'm not sure how this mining will be addressed with Denas, but it's certainly something that needs to have attention drawn to. And then it is also in a standing order waterway, an OFW, which is also important to know, to recognize all four of these things that I'm discussing with you right now are legislated. They are protected under Florida statutes. So, um, they are definitely in line considering this type of operation. Now, um, there's a couple of things that I have questions about regarding, um, your, I have questions, I'm sorry, um, support rather, out of your resolution ordinance. Frankly, that's why we're here. Now, we, you've got to hear a lot of information about both sides of the issue, and it's really about whether or not we're going to issue this resolution ordinance on the twenty-first. And who support your ordinance? Whole Florida. You add in here that it will, uh, protect the health, safety, welfare, and the citizens of the county. That to me is your primary goal here, of issuing this type of, uh, that particular ordinance out of your ordinance and out of your resolution. You also have for the public health, safety, morals, order, comfort, convenience, appearance, prosperity, and general wealth. And those are the things that we want you to stand behind when you go to vote in favor of this. We think your ordinances and resolutions to put a moratorium on mining so you can better understand what this is all about are key and important to your decision that you made today. And that, and that goes. Thank you.